Explanatory, our lunch report that our district will do for January. So we were able to review in our packets this week. Does anyone have any questions on what they saw? And Stephanie, or do you have anything for us? Anybody? Okay. So we will move on to our boces presentation.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you all again. I'm Trey Parker, district superintendent at the BOCs of your ATE boces. So excited to be here as always. The highlight of the evening will be the five wonderful students that will be here presenting and talking to you a little bit about their program. And then when we're done, we'll have an opportunity to talk to you a little bit about our vision for the future and our future focused ability and progress and what we have at our suite to envision and expansion and additional programming for our students over the next few years. But I just wanted to start with thanking you for having us here tonight with a few of our community team members and a few of our board members. I'm just always proud and excited to be here with you and doing the great work that we do in our community. And thank you for having us here. So we'll start with your student talking to you a little bit about their experience.
Hi, everyone. I'm David Ashen, executive director for technology and business operations over in our school support services. Over the years of coming here with professional development days. I had the privilege, last Friday, meeting these five wonderful people. So please stand carefully, go wire. Come on, just maybe step up right a second. And okay, that would be perfect. And if we could just have, I'm sure there's no more trouble here. Unless it's go ahead and boost yourself. Janay DeGrady is a program that currently in Georgia.
I'm Mason Moon. I'm in 11th grade. I'm in heavy freshman.
Okay, so I've got some questions for our boces. Starting with, why did you choose y'all to boces? For anybody who started?
Um, in, 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 because I was going to, I was going to, because actually I was getting very young. It's kind of just, almost like, um, um, he goes actually the definition is, but I need to use my, um, my heart.
I was just, I was going to ask because I just feel opportunities to set up as, um, fellow seniors that want to graduate and become straight up. Like performing there and having sort of a, um, so.
Uh, I'm just going to do a simple, I'm just going to do like step four as well as the opportunity to go write a single job from high school. And it was a great deal on college campus where there are a lot of, uh, stuff.
Uh, I was going to have a question to show how bad actual people are and do people. What do you say is not, like, the government?
Yeah, I want to work with them when I get out of school or try to give you the best work.
I chose the program because my brother, he went through the BOC program. And he would always talk about how good the program was and how much money's out of it. And I just wanted to get more experience with that BOC program.
All right, let's start with Mason and look at this time. Talk a little bit, I know you're waiting for the round of applause every single day. Trying to get up there, so I'm going to do a little thinking. Uh, what is it? Tell us about the program.
Um, the program, it's a lot of hands-on activities in the shop. It's doing any like paint piece or repair and operating equipment. And anything you can really think of based on heavy equipment?
Yeah, we, so the first year, it was, it was not, we kind of stick with the heavy programs and then a little bit more the science side. And then natural, the shoes, the instruction, what's the, kind of, the, 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 definitely all around the, 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 the.
Can you tell us about all of that, please?
Yeah, so, um, we really start off in clinical setting, which is really helpful because it's, it's clinical based, pretty much right off the bat. There's a lot of hands-on and you learn a lot about body, working with, with, around with a lot of medical access, right? So, uh, with ordinary, it has come to a point in, uh, about two thirty, we can use this word, because it's a physician. So I made it actually just with all hours to do, uh, city and help. I am able to, um, use like the distance, like, uh, totally, a lot of numbers.
For like in the past, you still have four percent of your so you're slightly over four percent. So this year was even, you're over four percent to like four point one. I kind of put the thing I need to throw forward here, I mean, so you're slightly over, but you're at the, you know, the four percent, which is, you know, for a small district, it isn't really that much. You always talk about, especially you could call out some third cross like that. It's usually a quarter, you know, like my family had road district, they wanted to move into their district, especially plus two thousand, just over a hundred thousand dollars. So that's like, and that's the district was smaller years, and so that's a safe place for the fund balance, you know, right up. But we, that's what we like to see that you keep that, you don't deserve to say. Looking how you ended up there, you have more revenues than Sky Rogers, which you last year you had fewer or less, this year or a hundred fifty thousand. The biggest one, which the private research will be a little bit different, looking at the revenue compared to your budget, you end up with a hundred thousand, then you end up with more than your budget. The biggest one was like money and property. So you're taking the money that you do have, or probably you're making most investments. I have one that was like, you just left your checking over here, you earned, you know, you earned over what your budget was, it was only a couple thousand. Here you run beyond investments that were getting five percent. And then even the most, the money wasn't the same, you know, so you made, you know, way over what was budget made. Kind of offset whoever, your state aid was slightly lower than what you probably did. That's not hard, because we do your budget now, and they're still, they don't even have, like, here's our actual numbers, they're doing their, but still, you kind of go through and again, but, you know, there's adjustments made after what we were doing, you know, your out of your rate will be adjusted in August, depending on, um, such as your access costs, if you expect to pay because you can adjust that in summertime, so you find out later on, you end up with a nice. On the spending side, we're able to pay, manage that. A lot of your play, that doesn't help the parents, which is good, because you're definitely jumped into the, I think it was a new plan. Now they're catching up, and going forward, your security rating increases. So all that equity you had in year four, be there. Looking at a couple other areas, new school launch program, they still had a loss, but it was better than the year before. They had a loss of a thousand dollars compared to, uh, year before it was twenty six thousand. In time, we'll have to do this year a lot more, if you want to issue school line program to cover the deficit. You've always budgeted two thousand. It's getting closer, but that could change too right now, the state reimbursing at a higher level. If that goes from year to year, you have to wait, you know, you have to wait and see what the state decides to do. Like I said, it did come down, your revenues over were over five thousand dollars higher than before, and your spending was going ninety five hundred before. So based on that, you know, you did make up some budget still, you know. So we're still on the whole, and it's hard, like, a lot of districts have had, they have to supplement, we do third district breaks, and we have five that are able to not have to be in the transfer. They're usually on the larger side, where they have more, something like that. Most ours would go anywhere from twenty five thousand, I have plenty of over a hundred thousand dollars transferred. Yeah, and a lot of it's the current benefits for the program. It really does, it's hard off term is out there, because we have schools that try to go to contract, and then whether you're located, it's good, the quality isn't always what's good. We have schools that jumped in, and they're like, consider what we want, but they end up coming back in. School, South Dakota, they were sidetracking, there was a lot of problems with it. So looking at, you know, what the cost of the program, a lot of are in the simple use.
We didn't do that touch, I went to a hundred thousand, next kid.
So that should, that should do it. And then looking at the bigger, the bigger thing when you're, you have a positive year, you actually spent up your PRP, the one ended this September, last, your four months, this past September, the other one ended, you can get events and do a project, what you do that should get something, not like a little bit, you know, that you wouldn't, so had to come out of your budget, or had to do a project, you should be able to do that. Those grants are over now, and now you're back down to, you know, you're right, all those ninety eight, like, who knows, I don't know, for, you're good for now, for the upcoming year, but then after that, I don't know what's gonna happen. So they were, um, used, they're used for these tests. Overall grants, we had one point three million, and most of them were the PRP. Another positive, we have over forty thousand dollars in debt service, which will be used for debt payments in the future. In the, in the back, I plus some foods, my recommendations. The staff actually, they gotta do a lot of work, uh, it was necessary to get everything done, like, to have redo work, um, you know, if it was done, if not done, and we're gonna have to redo a lot of stuff, so, um, they have to spend a lot of time on, you look at the record, maybe you should have, um, a lot of it, just because, like I said, you gotta go through and, and review, and start to see every day and stuff. And you have a whole transition of holding off the business office again, which is, which is very hard to do, and I have several schools I've gone through, and it's such a hard transition to go through, especially, there's no regular time to do it, but there's a part in time and try. And that was a couple of regulations, you see that some of the things came off last year, some like, you know, business manual, well, you have a whole new staff now, and so that now that you can, you know, here's what we do going forward, you know, you talk about maybe going to a different computer system or software, so that could change there too. But this way, you have something, you have new employees in there, so they can go, and they're designed, here's how we do it now, so going forward, that'll be true, that'll be true right now. Tyler, you already talked about the reserve plan, some of these things were started, have been, if you were forced about, or going through to help, for getting, getting everything done, completed, so out, going forward, so. And it's good to have, you never know, you know, someone's out for a while, since we saw that during COVID, a dear out, they can get some stuff in, and they knew exactly here's what we have to do, like, we said a lot of success. They don't have it all updated, and then they learn, like, how to do, how to do things, and it makes it much harder on the district. And also, clearly, they can get to the classroom. So there was, there was still some comments on that one, and that's another thing that they're working on that that they're, there's often reporting, they actually did it not, they're working on it in those, on the end, so it's that December. And then, some of them are like, the catch of seats is common throughout, so, on sale, it's like, probably have, just our business is, you know, get, get catch of seat common, about, you know, make sure you get in time when you're having that, whatever. We go through, we have a lot of this, you know, we have like teachers and people doing it, and this is like all of them. So we can have almost everybody doing it, right? But there could be a couple that, you know, you need to make sure you get in time, you know, the two, that is important, like, them, to kind of make sure we recommend it. And most all our schools, you can see in that pretty much have that, because that's like the biggest thing now, because just really don't feel attached, unlike other activities. Even that, this changing, we have schools that are moving forward to, you know, not that, but schools, for schools, they have different ones that, you know, don't do school fans, stuff like that, where they do their, a lot of their fundraising online, they do their drama tickets online, they have their prom. So now we're getting to the next stage, but then with that, setting up policies and procedures with that, it is easier to, like, for us, because you have it all, but you have to set up things to make sure that works good. So if they're going forward, that would be something to think about. Then, like, the other one was, yeah, they have a person at clubs, or if there's money left, that would be, they pass. Third, here's a bad idea of where the money's off and go, if they have a brick and can, when they leave, choose what they send out. And then they would put that on their report, so that would be one of the estimates,[546.62]
In most of our important schools over, we saw a huge decrease in the cost of our health insurance for that year. In future years, it's not like you're going to continue to see a decrease. It's going to stay flat. But what you've got to remember is you're not seeing that increase. So that's kind of a hard concept to understand. You know, you're not going to continue to see health insurance go down. But we're not seeing what we would have seen if everyone had stayed on the PPL. Does that make sense? Okay. So now what we're also seeing though is the increase of that area. And you're going to see two places where the programs. Okay, teaching regular school. Again, you're going to be seeing a decrease in this area. This is, we have two teachers that have retired. And we really see a decrease like this one via non- place. So that's actually a decrease. So, so again, to make you understand, there isn't increase in salary. But that was more than offset by the two retirees that we have in our position. Special program, again, just a slight increase. Teachers in special schools, there was not an increase. Constructional media, there was a slight increase. People, personnel services. Again, a slight increase in the salary and health insurance with other increasing increases. Transportation. You do see an increase in transportation. The numbers are kind of offline again. But what this is, is last year, the amount that we came in at with the overtime wasn't what we had in the budget. So we needed to make that budget line under the more than that. So we brought that up to the 790. Community services, same, discipline, same. Employee benefits, this is the second place that you're going to see that same health insurance conversation. There are other factors that get wrong, but the health insurance is really on that. Caused that increase. Central services. This was again, an area for overtime. We made it a more real estate overtime number. We didn't underwrite these. That's the budget portion of the presentation. So questions about that portion. What you really just saw was next year's budget proposal is that we increase what is under sixty. It's been a normal increase from one year to another. The areas where you saw large changes was where our retirement anticipated. And we introduced it for the other large increases of health insurance. I'm not saying there are other increases that we can add throughout the budget. But that one is definitely a big increase.
This is the budget comparison for the last six years. And these are actual figures and it shows where the budget has been kept in line. Some variance, if you will, never exceeding the tax draw. But an average six-year increase of 2.89%. State aid went up a little bit this year, a little bit more than last year. And like Scott Crusher said, a lot of these categories are finalized in August. So this is the information that we have at this point. And there's an increase of just days of $61,000 over the last year. This is the tax levy comparison. Again, staying very stable, never exceeding the tax cap. Yes, at the 2% tax cap, that's how it's referred to, but there are many factors that go into it. And therefore, the actual increase can vary. As you can see, the current level in the map is just over 4%. And the year before that was 2.9. However, again, stay within that tax gap. Revenue summary, again, it's broken out into three sections. Remaining very stable. State aid, slight increase. Overall, that state aid right there shows a reduction because of UPTA. But overall, it's an increase, the tax levy, again, staying within the tax cap. Misland is revenue, the main factors there are turn back. And revenue such as the retiree subsidy we get from the government for retirees staying on our health insurance. And the government pays us to have that happen. So all in all, that's how the budget was balanced, was with those three main debt holders. And this will be the ballot that everyone will see. We asked for approval. It's just that one item we voted on plus the two or two of them up for election. You'll see that as well, but the petitions aren't due yet. But this will be the actual vote on the budget, really as approved.
Can I make a question? So when is the?
So the anticipated vote for the board to vote on that budget would be the next board meeting. If the board did feel that they have enough information, nice, that is something that should be forward. One of the other things I will say, the board does seem to, if they can come up with a new exception audit on the things prior to this, therefore, we can still have a good status.
I would prefer to be able to take what we have, digest it, ask questions, and then throw it on the floor. Any other thoughts?
I don't know.
Is there a lot of comments? It's audit, yeah. So if we can add L, motion to accept the 2024, 2025 audit. Okay, so that is all of our presentations. So let's see if visitor comments. So we and the board have heard some feedback from our community saying that they, that there's a thought that you're not heard or listened to. And so we were thinking in order to make that seem a little more, that we would put any kind of visitor comments before our items for discussion and or action. And I have four people who are signed up. Is there anybody who would like to speak that, if not signed up? Okay. So there are four of you. Our usual recommendation is three minutes. How, what if we move that to five, to be at five minutes? Can you kind of keep this, that'll keep us on track, keep us there, but there's not a huge amount of people? So we can move it to five, we have a rule to say. So first, I have Brian May.
He has listed four, KAR the last week, and then his son, all modified direct to the game. He can use the air. And the RCT is standing on two grounds. I just, I don't think it's fair that the government sits, moves their time, their coaches, their practice, their teachers around the school. I don't understand why that happened. At the top of 50 cents, one of the murders was the John Furber nervous case that figured out across the board. And then all of a sudden, Johnson, the other, said, you're one of the crap. I just don't know the clarification on why that, why that happened or.
So I think that there's several weeks beginning on this topic. And I, it has become apparent over the last several years that there are some concerns about the way the fields are, the way the transportation is. It's a recommitment agreement as a board and with the board. They modified our major agreements that we would do as necessary, as benefits our teams. And the, our fields are better and better shaped. I know Minerva is working on their fields, but it was a consensus that we needed to have the varsity on our, on our field.
So then what you're saying is that Minerva Field, there's some part.
Not some part.
The John Furber Field, so this is where the first needs to play. And the other modified needs to play over.
That was our decision.
You're going to move modified way over. So my favorite is already all four soccer, that call, that that could be the share of the body.
I think it's a sport by sport decision.
That would be, how do you go?
Well, yeah. So I can do all of my emails. I think I was pretty clear on my stand. I think it's really kind of disturbing to me to think that you are implying that your modified players do not deserve the same opportunities unless they're with you. I think that as a board, there are several of you who are varsity players. There are far fewer than maybe one of you who are modified players. I'm not sure if any of you thought that through when you made this decision because it actually becomes a reasonable question of impartiality. You should have redeemed yourselves from any decisions that I've had because it looks very much to public that you're opening your own child's feet above the rules of the rest of the society. It is disturbing to me that you're at this point. I think you have missed the big picture. I think you are robbing some of the kids of the people and support system that would have come to this field to watch them play that will now not be able to watch their children live in the middle of the night. I think the fact that my child is going to travel to a field with a porta potty as the only bathroom option, and she's 13 years old. And I give you all, any of you that have been to that field, know that that field is out of the way, put a bet. There is nowhere for them to go in case of emergency. And don't worry, you're going to tell them to go home ever, unless stick there with them with a driver available for them in case of emergency. My drive goes from seven miles to the school to 17 miles runway to that field. I would always look around transportation for my child. It was my choice, it was a choice that I felt was best for her. And this decision would likely block me of that thing. And I think you really need to rethink what you are doing to your modified daughter.
I have, just standing.
I just, I'm here, I heard that the soccer programs can drop guidance. So I'm still having to go on the agenda for the current draft. Would you do more in your heart?
I have two votes.
Good evening. You all adjusted. Again, I know we're trying to stick to five minutes. I will try to be as quick as I can. I prepare the statement so I can try to stay to that. Should I go to the other? I hope that you'll allow me to finish. Over the past several weeks, I've reached out to the school board and ACS administrators to express my interest in remaining involved with varsity baseball programs in some capacity. Really in any capacity. As you all know, I'm the recre, I'm the recreating director for the town of John Furber. I've spent my entire adult life supporting sports and recreational opportunities in our community. Since the John Furber Sports merger began, I coached as much or more than anyone else for our athletic program. And I've given a great deal of time and effort in helping our student athletes do their best both on and off the field. To be clear, I'm aware, the members of the board have had concerns about my coaching style. And those concerns have played a key part in me being asked to take some time away from coaching for the district. I respect that assessment and all the mistakes that I've made in the past. Which is why I've taken a step back over the last several months. I would like to reiterate that I am not teaching to be a coach now. My reason for wanting to come for you today is so that you could look in my eyes and see the sincerity with which I say, I just want to be involved. I have coached most of the players on this varsity baseball team, which includes my oldest son and two of my nephews at some level since they were three or four years old, playing in the John Furber team ball program on the top of that field. I have watched them learn, grow, and reach a point where they are now competing at the highest level. And to be able to continue to share in their experience as high school varsity athletes would be priceless. However, this request to stay involved is not only just baseball. It is very, very personal. Because of what being involved with this means to me and to my son Rowan, who is a ACS junior and on varsity team for the third year. Rowan is a healthy. Rowan is also my best friend. And sports is the strongest part of the parent-child bond in each year. To be able to be in the dugout with him, to share in the highs and lows of the season, or to stay on the field with him in Cooperstown, or in Eastfield when the teams play there this spring. The value of those experiences are beyond measure and cannot be felt to the same extent by a parent's perspective. Worst of all, if missed, these experiences are never able to be repeated. For just about every one of you on the board, you either had a child graduate from high school or have children that will be graduating over the next few years. So I'm sure you can put yourself in my shoes. Time does not stop. My time to share certain experiences with my son is running out. To ask me to simply take a year off is not easy. Because that lost time and those lost experiences cannot be replaced. My specific, my specific request, and one that I hope that you will consider tonight, is to let me serve as the scorekeeper or pitch count for the team this year. This would not make me a coach. But I would serve as support staff for the head coach and the team. I would get to be in the dugout and with the team on day to day. I would be able to lend my many years of experience and knowledge as a player, coach, and umpire to help the team be successful. And as you may be aware, keeping an accurate scorebook, an accurate pitch count, recording finish differences across the season is incredibly important. Not something that the head coach typically has time for. Again, I just want to be involved. I understand that this school board can easily deny my request, choose to uphold my management through sports programs. But I'm begging you, please consider that this is about far more than just baseball. To deny my request to stay involved with the team this spring would be upholding what I believe to be an unfair double standard for some coaches and parents. It would be supporting the notion that someone who makes a mistake is not worthy of being given a second chance until they have truly suffered and lost something that can never be regained. And I feel it would be a cruel and very personal punishment for me simply having a coaching style that some members of the board or administration disagreed with. To the very least addition to today's agenda, regardless of scorekeeper. Guess I'd like to skip to that real quick. I don't believe that the board is getting all of the information or completely truthful information. First of all, I have a really hard time believing that my sister married, or my sister-in-law were told or would even agree to serving for coach's role if they knew that their involvement would directly prevent me from being called. I've tried to explain how much this opportunity means to me. And I'm asking the board the question, why it seems so important to administration that I not have this opportunity? I can't understand it. He's here today. I don't know if he will, but he can certainly speak for himself. I'd like to finish by reading a text message from varsity baseball coach, Jake Sauer. And I quote, like I told you the other night, that I put all three of your names as recommended for coach and pitch count. Not sure who is telling you the opposite. I've been told by the school, it's not up to me on your situation. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Items for discussion and or action. Motion to appoint Tom Connor and Joe Santino as head coaches for the modified baseball team for 2024, 2025 school year. Motion by Tara, second by Chris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's see. Here it is. I just wanted to put in my, with Tom being an assistant coach, would he be also the bus driver on those things and the supervisor last year?
That's fine. I don't think they'd be a lot of time for that.
I'm just going to just.
That helps. And I just want to again point out, if you're on this list, you'd be proud.
Okay. So that's carried. Motion to appoint Charlotte Bernard as coach for the modified softball team for the 2024, 2025 school year. Motion by Tara.
Second.
Second by Dale. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
In the post, same, carried. Motion to appoint Aaron Chambers as coach for the tennis team for the 2024, 2025 school year. Motion by Tara. Second by Owen. Any discussion?
I do want to talk a little bit about the student. So I've been going back and forth to North Horn. And in that conversation about tennis, I don't know if through the superintendent and the athletic director changed in North Horn, but they were likely to use that we were going to join them as a group. And all along, the conversation has always been to merge as the John Furber Minerva North Horn team. So in talking that over, one of the things that came out was we both hired a coach and they're going to do most of their practices individually. We do realize that there has to be some time spent as a team because they're exceeding that has to get done. And there's also the possibility of doubles having the opportunity to play together. So that's going to be left up to the coaches to kind of figure out some of that. But again, there are going to be oftentimes where we do our practicing, where we're come together as a team. It was also agreed that we were going to wear both colors as we have across country. And you know, this year, maybe look at next year or this week of that still having a new uniform on the first team like we did across country this year. The last discussion was around earlier, they were playing. Prior to this even happening, we realized that our courts, which are in okay position, are not enough to hold meets involving the town courts. I think years ago, we maybe used the copper field court. But anyway, all of those courts, including the town courts, are not at a point where they can be played on. So we can possibly remember the county courts. But the realization that we did not have Minerva players, I will say today, it's fun that we might have a point of change for some of the Minerva who might be playing. But at that point, I did agree that we were only in the North Horn. It's been that, or that would surprise for a whole three months.
Any questions or a question on that? All in favor?
Aye.
In the post, same, carried. Motion to appoint Jake Sauer Jones as the boys' elementary basketball coach for the 2024, 2025 school year.
Motion.
Motion by Tom. Second by Dale. Any discussion?
I just want to put in that, the word boy should be, I started with that.
I did, I.
You did, it's like I said. Just so you know that, probably a little a few months ago, we appointed Dave Cunningham as the girl elementary basketball coach, and they've been doing it together. We could not find a boys' elementary basketball coach. So they agreed to bring the boys onto with them and whatever, what would the coach do?
All in favor?
Aye.
In the post, same, carried. Motion to approve the 2025 school year sports merger for the Adonan, the John Furber Central School, the Minerva Central School, and the North Horn Central School for the Nordic bowling and tennis. Motion by Tara. Second by Dale. Any discussion?
We already had golf at the last one. Nordic and tennis are two that we've been working with. Only another conspiracy for our golf, where if we did want, if they see we did want to play, it opens for them to be part of that, or like I said, we did have students to part under that. It just opens, to my knowledge, we do now. But it just opens the possibility.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the post, same, carried. Motion to appoint Sarah Ng as a long-term substitute for vocal music at class one, B8, perfect match seventeen, 2025. Motion by Tara.
Second.
Second by Chris. Discussion?
I just want to make sure here, everyone knows that this is a substitute position in anticipation of voting for our students if this comes back. We just don't know.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the post, same, carried. Motion to accept the cooperative purchasing program for the year by additional bases for days of the 2025, 2026 school year.
All in.
Motion by Tom, second by Tara. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
In the post, same, carried.
Good. I know in previous groups that there's a good discussion. But yes, the one, the part of the year after we took that.
Um.
And the person.
Everybody agree on that? Just, uh, any question? I think. Maybe? Okay. Um, so after H. After H. Maybe that was the plan, after H.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so we're going to have a motion to allow students to apply for the side classified. The John Fergman Central School District for education, knowledge, consent, and approval of the superintendent. We press and authorize the head of building the grounds with more house care range and catering. Control capacity to make the application of necessary capacity for the side to be free on that destructive influence of current and current. Motion. Tara. Second. Second by Sarah. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Standing. There. Okay. Then we'll motion to adjourn to an effective session in regards to personnel. And we will be back immediately. Any discussion? Second by Sarah. Second by Erwin. Okay. All in favor?
Erwin, what was that?
I, I. Same.
This is so cold, I just can't bear to own that.
You are so cold.
I don't know, I don't have a lot of this to do. I don't have my time, my office, getting screened by this. No, I'm stupid. It's going, it's going down. I don't know. I don't, and, no, but I have all this cardigan back there. Look at that. Oh, it was never from your video? It's on your desk.
Don't have that? I don't know.
I don't need it. But I had nothing to do with you, so I was looking. I have nothing to do with that, so I was looking. That's a great question. You don't understand, the video didn't work forever. For the first fifteen minutes of this, I don't know why. They said it went streaming and they said, no, it just stays and I finally, I just sat in the fashion, but. I'm going to speak next week, come on, and I'm going to take care of you. And we think that I'm a year. You have to leave it, I mean, I'm not. I am. So. You can't, you don't need a moon that shade now, no? I don't need it. No. She doesn't need a moon that shade now, no? Who made the motion for the topic? You're doing this, you're doing this. I'm already tired. Um, Allison, is Tara going to be back soon? Because she, she has two.
She doesn't make it.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, no, she, she, I thought about her. Okay. I thought it was, it was a problem with it. She's working up for the court. Today, the picture was going to look like, no?
Wow. It's gonna be good.
So. I thought like that. So many happy memories. Oh, weren't they? Okay, well, they're still confident.
Yeah. I was just not that happy.
No, they did so good. He's a good oldie. It was just looking nice.
Yeah, it's like when she's like, hi, control.
You're so negative. She did his work job.
Yeah. She's a big day.
Who was Tom?
He was perfect.
Who was what? Oh.
He was good on paper and then he was very certain that he would make me feel wrong.
Well, it's a time, you have a good time. We'll do anything. You would have had a hard time.
I would, I would.
Yeah, they did a nice job. That's the first year that we did board members come. Did you understand me?
Yes.
Okay, good. No, I said, that was the first year we had board members from the Bosom School.
Yeah.
For all of this, they were local, um, one. Well, the husband and wife tried to see today, but they're not only there and in box, they're in peril.
It's terrible.
Yeah. What? Talking? You were always understanding.
Are they hoping that you went to someone else? They may say.
I am.
I don't, I think you're odd.
Mama. Are you, what are you doing? What? I don't want to do anything. Or I don't want to talk about it. I'm just going to be, I'm going to be. Oh, that's odd.
I.
That only, that you can't wave today. Wait today. You're on, I'm not. I haven't, so everybody's on but me. No, we can't, because we can't have it all. And you were presenting, so you were important. Never. Always. Never. I am just a little person in the world. Who's bringing, who's in here?
I don't have any other clothes. It's not in the, you're pretty nice.
No, this is a pretend, a cold. No, but there was no heat on L and O today. And the spring. They didn't have the spring yet. It doesn't transfer spring.
That went to my feet.
Yeah, I don't know what I mean. Okay. What?
Shut down.
Like, you know.
I like him selling, it was going to be fifty, whatever, something.
No, it was like seven days.
I'm serious, why did you hear that? It comes like all the nation at all. I'm really watching him right now. Not the right.
I just had rain. I had forty-six degrees again. Hope to find that happens. I want, I had no snow at all.
And that's rude.
Oh, yeah, you have seventy percent snow.
Should I count? That's rude.
I had no snow? Yeah, but it's not.
Well, you could start with fair dealing, so you still can't see much. Like, I run the chair and it's come off.
Oh, you can't have anything.
You could have been a little hot.
No. Okay, mom, you know, but. No, no, no. I'm ready. I'm ready. Some, I want to do that. I am dying.
You're walking to the field, I go back.
I think you want to, yeah. Is there, is there the thing, why do I need to put that in the?
You took it.
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't. Do I need that?
Oh, I have it. I have it.
Should I attach that or not?
No, I would ask her that.
I put that in?
Yeah.
Anything?
There's a film.
Can I have a piece? My favorite coach. That's where you were. You're right. Can't argue with that.
Can't argue.
Can't argue with that.
Then you find.
Oh, no, that's empty. So, who's that? No, that's the, the, the. What's wrong? Yeah. 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 So. No, uh, what is going on?
Where my nose? You want to go, you want to ride, so you can. I think that would be fine. But trying to go what, hard, we go right. I can be, I can, I had. Can you put the, yeah? Doing your own mission.
I love you, buddy. I laugh, I'm.
I thought you were the girl who got that application and then. The court, no change, you've been saying.
There. I don't think. I like, so, you guys, maybe this? There you go. I'm step by step. No. Nothing's up. Right, for reasons, we decided to stop it. That's what I'm saying. Stop it.
I thought that was funny, could I repeat it? Everything.
Oh. I'm getting it, yeah. I laughed like you did, sit down when I go home, that's.
You're lying, I'll be sure.
Yeah, I. Have you got a seat down? I thought I was happy. No. You're fine. You're fine. Even if you're ill. Not even though he homes it down.
Say it again? But why? You should have seen your table. I mean, you've seen it all. Like, at what point do you guys talk about things? You can't have them. The reality. I live in seven minutes. A job for you. And for you. He's there, not with him.
No, not at all. No, very is. And I only brought my, um, windows today. I don't, there was. There was two boys when I went to cook this morning.
I also knew where I wanted to go and then when I got to be done. I was out there, I was at, I was on my side. That'd be great. If you're the couple. On editing.
What? Yeah, okay. Well, okay, fine. They already asked all of my neighbors. They won't even know. So, I have to have an email, I continue on Wednesday, Thursday. How is that, ma? You got a what? Do I know about that? It's all bad. Oh, that wasn't it?
No.
Oh, dear.
Yeah. I'm like, I'm due.
I mean. You're fine. You can gather, when you're doing a public thing, plus office maybe you use.
Yeah, but I want to stretch it better.
We need approval of any what? We need the. We need approval of what?
How come no one told me?
Of course. How come no one told me? Well, we want to.
In my mind, that is like, that's very important. Or twelve.
Okay, so this was the Cindy.
Oh, wow.
Perfect.
No, but I wish for any one. So, please, I can help with it.
I found the morning.
Yeah.
Shut up.
Yeah, I see that.
Is it his time to work back in court? It was on me.
Can you word it?
Probably the article? I'm near the passing. I don't see it that way. I know that's. Because you may see. Professional softballing already has its weight, so they are always. So, I just think, go off the line, you have a choice. I, I come from a different way.
I came over here and everything was here.
Well, I know.
And you're lost.
Right, that's possible. For this court.
Or if we're discussing our court of course. I think that we should, that should even be a discussion. We have a knowledge of our rules. There's literally two people. On each road going to town. Two months. Even more, everybody is going to Burning. Cool, that's the new thing. The burning pit. When it's a court of peace. And my shit is a court of pardon.
I begged for a court of pardon on this field. I begged for a court of pardon on this field.
I can picture it happening.
I said, I did. Because when I coached the school with it all. They were no good. I begged. I would have loved to. You know how many schools have four of five?
Was there a question? Last year at Allie's. She slid into her.
Any damage?
Uh, motions to return to the other session.
Motion.
So, we are going on meeting for a couple minutes. So, we will get to the point of view here. Uh, so motions to return to the other session. Make sure that Sarah seconded Tara. Um, all things. You opposed, stay in place. So, we. We have this. But. We're on high. Let's hope you all put this. So, recognize Jay Starren, a diversity baseball team coach with El Power, Marano, and Mar Rafa as contributors for the varsity softball team for the two thousand and four to the twenty five standard. So, Jay, uh, discussion about North Warren soccer.
Okay, so, um, I've still been in conversation with North Warren about the girl soccer merger. And we've gone back and forth with three different ideas, realizing that transportation, um, is probably the largest hurdle to get over. So, what North Warren has offered to do at this point is that they are going to assign one of their own substitute bus drivers to be girl soccer program, is how they kind of worded it. Um, that would mean that that bus driver would be basically in charge every night of being the circle of girl soccer between the three schools. Um, and they give a couple of examples. Let's say that the practice is going to be here. They would start up at North Warren, then the girl, the, um, Nerva come here to practice and then do the work of that. If it was the practice where they get North Warren, they would start here. And they could do one of two things, they could either go into the home bus or a practice spread and she could come here and use one of the car buses. Again, doing the circle where the practice and coming back. Um. So, transportation is, I'm going to see somewhat taken out of the equation. I do want to point out that, you know, people can get sick, people, things come up. So, I don't want to say that. We're sick. About our drivers. Um, I think our drivers are clear that we have, even say we have enough people to deal with.
Yeah, we only have, what, two bus drivers and Tom Perry after that even do sports runs.
I mean, I think, I think what I heard, I corrected my notes, that that was a hint and they did not want that to report because they were concerned that we did not have enough.
That is what I heard.
So, I, I guess I kept trying to figure out a way to practice before, because I think we also heard from the coaches and the ADs that at least at the varsity level, this was a positive move. Right now, we do have, um, enough modified. So, our modified would stay separate to the, to only be for the girl varsity.
Oh, this is a very good resolution so that we can do the merger and have the girls. Yep, absolutely. Is this something we have to vote on?
We do have to vote on the merger because, well, it has to go to the, um, NBA.
Are there any more questions or comments on that?
I can say, what, uh, I, I mentioned that, uh, my, uh, this pudding, pudding, um, that I was. That I was for the merger, but the transportation actually was sticky like that. Um, and it seemed to come up with a solution for it, so. I'm in favor of it.
So, can someone make a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Can you say the motion, please?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion, um, to the Nerva, Johnspurk and North Warren, uh, girl soccer. Berthony soccer. And, and you want to, uh, discuss the details, just, see? I, I, I don't answer the motion. Okay. That's the motion that, for school year two thousand forty five, two thousand forty six.
I can mention my Ellen, second, second, I thought. Um. All of them. I, I oppose. Yeah, okay, one of those. They invite a student, a student. Okay. Okay. Um. Okay, so motion under the recommendation of the varsity baseball coach to appoint Ashley Vaughn, Mary O'Shastie, and P O'Shastie as school president of the varsity baseball team for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school. Motion by Tara.
Second.
Second file, Irwin. Um, all David.
All right.
In the post, a sting. Sting, there is.
If we go over.
Yes, there are, is a, there's a contract that we need to sign. Um. To make sure that we are all engaged. Um. Most, we need to add an L, since we have L. Um, motion to accept the audit for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school. Motion. Motion by Tara. Second by Irwin. Your question. All David.
All right.
Any opposed? Sting, there is.
Thanks, Jonathan. And I will say, if, if we have any questions on this budget, I really need you to call me, um, or step in, but happy because the night that we come back and have our next meeting is the last night that the board intends to approve the budget.
We have to create next month.
Yes. Second. So if there are questions or questions, we.
All right, and we can do it in the forum.
Okay.
Okay, committee of course. We have. Building again, you guys need to have a talk mark?
Everybody wants to know.
Everybody, okay. So, um, talk about building again.
This is when. Um. Um, it is what I have, it was, it was again about the gym events and trying to close up that project. Um. You know, if I look backwards and see anything in that project, um, it might have been a good idea, and if you think in the future we need to do a project, we do look at a sort of a work. Finding Warren has been incredible. His knowledge and his time working with the contractors. But he also hasn't made a good job. Um, so doing the D tub and setting up the things that are supposed to work. Um, you know, that this can happen in a schedule. Although he went above and beyond what he wanted to happen. So, um, and again, it's quite a pretty thing, you know, while you're like, um, but in the future, I will look at any type of project that I can maybe do with that. So that really what we talked about was trying, you know, to help establish a unit that issues and, um, you know, having a discussion with all of the, um, contractors that I was working on.
Um, policy management, we are going to be the entire policy manual. We, we need feedback from the different departments on the different policies that they, um, that we're given. And we've gone through them, we've kind of moved them into piles for questions and clarifications and we're in the middle of that process. And last meeting, we had someone come and wonder why the policy wasn't on the website.
And that will be, um, changed once it's put all together. Um, I will say I called the hearing one, the people at the health manual. Um, they were a little surprised that we responded, what is the process? Um, my hope is that people start putting changes in that were recommended by the, um, the different people who, you know, you've been in the department. And if possible, by this summer, um, we have the second draft. And that we.
Can anyone come to the.
Yeah, the main involvement in the.
Okay, um, financial, we have an update tonight. Um, again, if you have a question about what might happen if that could be well, we'll go on the update in a month and then we'll have a present. Presentation.
Yeah, we have a couple of things that, that. Right now, I'm going to do that tomorrow.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry.
The public presentation of the budget.
Will be.
The budget here. Yeah, but not as a national meeting.
No.
Um. Is that all that? Yes. Okay, update of course.
I have a couple of updates. Um, last, um, meeting, there was some conversation about A I and the policy. Um, and looking at creating a policy. One of the things that I did between times, I did reach out to Queensberry. And Queensberry, um, they don't have a direct policy on A I. Um, as most schools I have found have a direct policy. Where they located in Queensberry is under their academic integrity, integrity of conduct. Um, and it talks about A I in there. Um. So I think schools are doing some different things. They're doing it all different ways, but that is an example and that's something that we should look at. Um, which that would basically go in our team for, um, conduct. Um, I think it's important to know that we are also moving forward in other areas. Um, and we quickly have Heather talk about, um, we had a person from Bosse come up and talk to our staff. Specific staff members about A I.
Yeah, yeah, uh, Laurie, um, when Bosse came up, um, it was I'm sure I know the date, but, um, Michael Morgan. And, um, she met with our grades. Let me see. Five through eight. Including, including that E L A, um, actually at E L A, high school teachers. Um, just to talk about, um, what their options are when it comes to A I. And, um, programs that can generate A I documents, what to use, what not to use, what to trust, what not to trust, things like that. And, um, she didn't do something new that they weren't familiar with, but she very, very highly recommended they use. And have, um, since they're using that, it's that business people, so that was a, a positive thing for our. Um, but she also talked a lot about the what not to, and what not to trust. And, um, a part of it, a little eye opening and a little scary, to be honest. Yeah, but very informational. So I think moving forward, um, more of that sort of thing for profession, professional development down the road and creating this policy, it is going to be important. Because it's not going away.
And the other place where we've also looked at A I is last year, and we're coming, we're doing it again. But in our full day, True North, um, meeting, we had, uh, national speakers coming in, um, speaking on A I. Um, I think the important takeaway from all of this is we as the teachers and adults have got to figure out a way, and I think we already do, and some of we are ready, of how to help the students understand, and quite honestly, to use A I. A I is a real thing, it's going to be in their life, they are going to use it. But there are parameters around using A I. I think, um, the guest speaker that we had last year, the True North Day, said it best when he compared, looking back in the seventies, early seventies, and the real first calculators came out, and, you know, there was a destruction of math. And, you know, he compared that they had to figure out how do they use the calculator while still making sure students use their basic math. We've got to figure that out now with A I. Um, so I don't think our colleagues would ever say we're not going to allow A I. It's how are we going to do this and help students?
Any other. Any other update you have?
Um. I think I'll go and why you feel a little bit of.
Sure. Want to do that? Okay. Uh, yeah, yeah, musical is, uh, three weeks away and, um, so it's crunch time, everything going on nicely, um. We, um, came up a little bit short with some of our student class members, so maybe put some adult class members to play themselves. Which seems to be working out nicely. Um, the team putting it all together, it's, it's, well, together, you know, a little bunch of them, that could be accepted. So, um, we're real excited to do it soon. Uh, I also want to speak about Battle of Books put on by Bosse, happened last week, Mike and I were able to attend. Um, it's a great event at Siniara on that, we have nineteen students who go to two, three, six, participate. And, um, oh, third graders, that home, first place banner. And, um, all the kids did great. And I just wanted to say congratulations to, uh, Ryan and Amanda and our archers for their, um, their turnout and, um, their placing at, um, the tournament in Texas a couple days ago. Uh, we had a fourth grader that placed fifth overall amongst the elementary boys. So great job there as well.
Got all the updates? Other things? Um, upcoming dates. We have March eighteenth, coffee with Mike. March twenty-first through twenty-third, Youth of Government, to the Deadman Hotel. March twenty-fourth through twenty-eighth, Spirit Week. March thirty-first, Britain, meeting, nine A M. April fourth, um, is our class of twenty twenty-seven spaghetti dinner. April fourth through fifth, website story. April tenth, right across blood drive. April fourteenth to eighteenth is our spring recess, and then April twenty-second will be our next board education reading. And, um, we have a motion to adjourn. Tara.
Second.
Second by Lawson. All David.
All right.
Any opposed? Sting, there is.